Today is the August 10th, 2017. City Council meeting is now called to order. Forgot what day it was there for a second. Tonight, very special night. Our prayer and pledge will be led tonight by David and Cindy Willard's grandchildren. Granddaughter Elle Boatman will lead us in the prayer along with her, helping her little sister Lily, and then his grandson Mac will lead us in the pledge. So please rise.
Please bow your heads in prayer. Dear God, thank you for this day and for all your blessings. Please hope our hearts be loving and kind today. Thank you for the opportunity for me to pray to the city council. Thank you for everything you give us and all you do. Amen.
Amen. Please, please join me as we pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I say we just adjourn the meeting right now and let it be. Because that's going to be a hard one to follow right there. Thank you, Elle, Mac, and Lily, for leading us in our prayer and pledge tonight. Y'all are really special to us, and we appreciate you very much. Tonight, in employee recognition, we're going to talk about the beautification department. The beautification department is a small but determined group of people who strive to make our city a more beautiful place to live, work, and play, with only nine people in the whole department. Beautification: they maintain all the landscaping for downtown, cemeteries, medians, the city hall complex, and municipal buildings, empty the trash cans at our parks, clean up all illegal dump sites, cut down and dispose of dangerous trees in the right of ways and on city maintained property, maintain municipal flower beds, including those in all entryways, mows or contracts the right of ways of all roads throughout the city. Mows and maintains over 300 vacant and lean lots for the city and the county. They're also responsible for overseeing the city's mowing and vegetation control contracts for public works. Last year, beautification was able to renegotiate our mowing contracts, which resulted in savings of over $85,000 to the city. Employees: Amanda Ellsworth, Gary Johnson, Jacqueline Hairston, Curtis Pipkins, Dewayne Sheffield, Charles Johnson, and Lawrence Tucker. Please come forward. Thank you all for being here. First off, I want to say thank you for what you do for the community, because people don't really realize someone does actually have to get out there and mow and take care of and clean up and cut down, all the things that require our city to stay and look the way it does. In all of our parks, everything that you all do, you all make Longview the beautiful city it's to live in, and we as a community want to tell you thank you, because it's hot out there, and y'all are working long, hard days in the heat, and you don't complain when it's hot, you don't complain when it's cold. You're always doing your job, and we appreciate you all very, very much for the dedication you provide for our community, because without what you all do, we would not have the community that we have right now, and we appreciate it, because we've come a long way in how our city looks in the last four or five years, and you all have made an amazing impact on what we've done in the community. So I want to just thank you all personally. Once again, we just appreciate what you do, and thank you for being here with us tonight, but thank you for keeping Longview beautiful. Y'all have a great day. Thank you all. That's a hard-working group of people right there, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, community recognition. Let me read you this. The person I'm recognizing tonight is a very special individual. A few of the things that this young, this man does: he drives a bus to pick up homeless people for the Shatree Ministries on Saturday. He picks them up all over Longview and takes them to Shatree Ministries on Highway 80, where they serve a homeless meal and share within the love of Jesus and praise with them daily. He serves as a deacon at Marbury Baptist Church. He serves as a deacon prayer partner at Church 2. He helps with the Marshall Marbury Campus. He loves working with the kids there. He visits countless sick people in hospitals and homes. I have seen him do so many things I can't even begin to list them: paint homes for people, repair homes, build handicap ramps, buy meals at restaurants for complete strangers, make hospital visits to people he doesn't even know. He visits shut-ins. He brings birthday cakes and dinners to elderly couples who have no family around on their birthday and listens to hours of their old stories. He visits nursing homes to lift up spirits of the residents. I've seen him spontaneously bring dinner to a man who's caring for his wife with Alzheimer's and spend hours with them and encourage them to make them laugh. Just a couple weeks ago, his wife saw a thank-you note in the mail from the elderly couple that he had cleaned out their gutters. It's endless. And after all that, he comes home to his crazy wife, and I can attest she is crazy. She really is, and she's a sweet lady. And beyond all that, this guy has a full-time job. He works full-time every day. So this is the guy that I want people to meet when they come to Longview, Texas, because this is what Longview, Texas, is all about. This is a guy that cares about this community, and he cares about others more than himself. He's selfless, self-serving to other people, not to himself, and that's the kind of guy that I want to honor tonight, and he's my friend, Brad Olson. Once again, Brad has no idea why he's here tonight. I called and I said, "Can you meet me at City Hall? I need to ask you a question." And he shows up. He has no idea what he's here for, but that's the kind of guy he is. If I'd have said, "Brad, I need you to redo that flower bed out there," he'd be out there working on that flower bed while we're sitting in here doing this meeting. This is the kind of guy we have in Longview that is... I'm proud he's my friend. I'm proud he lives in Longview, and I'm proud to say thank you, Brad Olson, for being a community servant. Once again, if we had 75,000 Brad Olsons in Longview, that's what I would hope for every day. So once again, thank you, Brad Olson, for being a community person that we are proud to say lives in Longview, Texas. Thank you very much. We're here to citizen comment. I do have one speaker card tonight, Mr. Greg Williams.
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, and the council members. I want to bring something up and see if y'all might consider something. You know, we've tried to do a lot of beautification around the city of Longview, and a lot of times, what the code enforcement people are running into is people dumping building materials around the city. There's a soccer field out by Luterno that a year or two ago, I got a couple of phone calls from. There was one contractor came out of Henderson and one out of Longview, and they were bidding to clean that up, because the city had went to the people and said, "Y'all got to clean this mess up. It can't be here," especially on our thoroughfare coming in. And so they called me, because we have a recycling facility, and there's two in the city, there's two out here in this area. There's not just one, there's two. And basically, we take in bricks, block, asphalt, concrete, and dirt, and we recycle that stuff and then sell it out, and the contractors use it. And a lot of the contractors bring it and do it, but if they had some way for the city to say, "You can't just dump this stuff anywhere, because we have places to carry it," it's no different than having to go to the landfill, except it won't cost them to come out there and dump it, you know? And in the bigger cities, they've imposed a lot of stuff like this, so that they don't wind up with those problems. People take them to a recycling facility and recycle it. And I just wanted to bring that up and see if that was something y'all might consider looking at, you know?
Mr. Williams, we certainly will, but we don't respond back.
I know, and I just wanted to bring to our attention... If you had any questions, I would answer them.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, and we'll get somebody to come see you at the back of the meeting, okay? Thank you very much, sir. I have no more speaker cards, other than for zoning. Would anyone else like to speak and fill out a card after the speaking is over? Very well. Public safety update? Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mac, council members, Mr. Willard, I have just a few announcements, repeat announcements for my update tonight. And the clicker's not working. First of all, I'd like to remind everybody of our upcoming Citizens Police Academy. We still have a few seats available. We'll begin September 7th through October 19th on Tuesday and Thursday nights. We'd love to have citizens come and learn more about their police department, and they can download an application at longviewtexas.gov backslash CPA. We'd love to have citizens come and learn more about the police department, and we have just a few seats open for that. We'll also be offering the same Citizens Police Academy in Spanish, and that will run from September 11th through October 18th, on Wednesday nights, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that will be held at 1505 South Green Street at Revolutionized Lives. And for more information, they can reach out to Officer Myra Gonzalez at 903-720-6656. Also, we have just a few seats remaining in one of our most popular courses, our Women's Safety Course. That'll begin September 18th through the 23rd, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And for more information, they can call 903-808-3388. Officer Christie Bryan, and fill out an application and attend this free safety course seminar. Also, one of our biggest events of the year will soon be coming up in October. On September 5th, on Tuesday, September 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we'll be having our National Night Out kickoff party. I'd like to encourage everybody that wants to hold a block party to come to the kickoff party, register your National Night Out block parties, pick up some promotional information, and we have a good event planned for the National Night Out kickoff party, so I'd like to see a lot of folks there that are planning on having parties. Also, I'd like to thank our Citizens on Patrol Group. Last week, they held an appreciation luncheon for the police department. I want to thank them for the support that they show to our department on a regular basis. Also, Arabella Longview, I'd like to thank them. They had a police and fire appreciation luncheon this past week, and it was nice to go out and visit with them and spend some time with assisted living out there. So I want to thank them for what they've done for us as well. Also, next week, as a reminder, school will be back in over the next two weeks, and just like to put the reminder out there of our school zones and school buses on the road and the safety, and ask everybody to just kind of watch out for our children, slow down in the school zones, and we'll be out there the first couple of weeks of school. So, any questions?
Thank you, Chief Bishop.
Thank you.
Mr. Birdle.
Can the women that already have gun licenses, can they take that course? The safety course?
If they already have their gun license?
If they have a CHL license, can they already go ahead and take that course too?
Yeah, they can come take it. Yeah. It's not a course to get your concealed license, but if they have a concealed license and want to take it, by all means, certainly.
Well, that's the ones that asked me, so I thought I'd find out.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Chief Steelman.
Mayor Mac, members of council, Mr. Willard, thank you for the opportunity to update you on some things that have been happening in the fire department since we last met. A few weeks ago, we received a letter in the mail, and these are the kind of positive responses about how effective our emergency response service can be here in the city. This is a couple that lives up in Town Lake Village on Kings Mountain Court. They had a fire on the back of their house on their deck, and they were very complimentary, and the reason I wanted to point this one out is it exemplifies the initiation of the call all the way through the mitigation of the problem, and they were just... I put a copy of the letter, just I don't want to get into all that detail up here, but they went into so much detail about how, I guess, impressed they were by how all of that system worked together and in such a magnificent order and the timing on it. It just goes to the quality of emergency services that we have here in Longview. Our crews are a huge part of this and making it happen. Can you advance the slide, please? So this is just some of the crews that were involved with this, and you'll notice I even gave some reference there to the 911 call taker. That's where all of this begins, and it's how effective the information is that that person can pull out of that person activating 911 to make sure that we're sending the right resources to the right place and getting them there as quickly as possible. So just another good example of how effective our emergency response service is here in Longview. We have an upcoming promotional ceremony on August 22nd. This is a big one for us. We have nine people that are slated to promote. They actually have already promoted this as the official promotion ceremony form. They're already acting in these capacities to the most extent. So we hope the people, the public, can join us for this. It's open to the public, two to four, at the Fire Department Training Center at 411 American Legion. This will be a big event, so we certainly want people to turn out and support these people as they take that next step in their career path. The SBA loan program, I've talked about this one a couple of times. I do have an update there. If you'll notice, we've had some number change since the last council meeting. One more person got approved that had applied, and that number went up from 108,000 to 206,500. So it just shows that our residents that are taking advantage of this and light of the tornado and the impact that we sustained are having some success of hopefully getting it back in the recovery process and getting back on their feet, getting their homes restored, so forth. So we're very appreciative, and this is good feedback to get. It just goes to show that all that time and effort that we went into collecting all that data to make us qualify for this is paying off for our residents, so we're certainly pleased with that. Code Red, I'm going to keep talking about this one. Our numbers are climbing. We've actually picked up a few subscribers since our last council meeting, so we're going in the right direction. And just so that the citizens understand that our emergency warning is a two-step process, the outdoor warning sirens being one part of it, and the Code Red activation of the Code Red emergency notification being the second, so that you find out that timely and critical information of how to protect yourself accordingly. And heat. I know it hasn't been really hot. We've been very blessed with a unique summer so far. If you'll remember, the number that was up there at our last council meeting is we had responded to six heat-related illness or heat-related emergencies out in the city, and since the last two weeks, we've only had one. So we're appreciative of that. I think the weather, in conjunction with hopefully that people are paying attention, they're staying cool, they're drinking lots of fluids, has caused that number to remain low, and we hope it stays that way. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions with the chief? Chief, I just want to say I've received a number of really, really nice emails and compliments from the fire department on EMS services and providing that you all have gone through the hospitals, and y'all have done a great job, and I just want to take the time to say you guys do a great job. I think we have the best fire department anywhere in the state of Texas, and I appreciate all the efforts you guys put into what you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now to consent agenda. Anything else council would like to pull off for separate discussion?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now to zoning. We'll have a public hearing on application Z17-04. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mac, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting a rezone from agricultural zoning designation to single-family zoning district. As you can see, there's a lot of agricultural out here. When annexation occurs, property that is annexed into the city is automatically assigned an agricultural zoning designation. When development occurs on the property, the property must be rezoned. Tenerife Road is a minor arterial roadway, which is appropriate for this type of development as long as access management is followed. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, do recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. I have speaker cards from three individuals for questions only. Any questions of the individuals, or Ms. Choi?
I was wondering if I could, if Arun or the developer could come and just describe what kind of development they're looking at putting in...
Yes, sir.
I have Arun, Terry, and Jimmy. Take your pick.
Arun looks like he's ready.
Come on.
Good evening, Mayor Mac, City Manager, and the council members. My name is Arun Srinivasan. I am a civil engineer representing Akron Consulting on this rezone. The client is proposing to rezone 13.7 million acres into SF4 from agriculture with the hopes to put a subdivision there to cater for smaller, compact housing development.
What size houses are you looking at there?
This is, we're still in the planning phase, and we're looking to put in anything between 1,350 square feet to 1,500 and about 1,600 square feet, two-bedroom and three-bedroom housing.
What are SF4? And SF4 sizes can... You're looking at SF4, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it can go to, what's the size range on that, Angela?
SF4, minimum lot size is 60 by 100. The actual size is 7,500 square feet. Minimum house size is 1,000 square feet.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're now to a public hearing on application Z17-05. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezone from a single-family five seen in the blue to general retail zoning district. The applicant plans to rezone these parcels for a restaurant with a drive-through window. The land to the south, the property owner has under contract and will be utilized for the construction of the restaurant with the drive-through window also. The next public hearing item, city council, we will present, I will present to city council, will be a specific use permit for the actual drive-through window. Marshall Avenue is a principal arterial roadway, which is appropriate for this type of use as long as access management is followed. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, do recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions or speakers? I do have a speaker card for questions only from Travis Crafton. If none, then public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing on Z17-03. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. This application is for Z17-03 for a specific use permit for a drive-through window, as seen in the previous zoning case. This is the SUP for a drive-through window. The reason a SUP is required in general retail zoning district is to ensure no negative impact to adjacent residential properties. Through the development process, the developer will meet all City of Longview codes. Marshall Avenue is a principal arterial roadway, which is appropriate for this type of development. Planning and zoning commission, along with city staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers? Any questions? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. That concludes zoning for the evening. Budget items. Discuss the 2017-2018 budget. Mr. Willard.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have really no changes at this time from the budget presentation that we presented at the last meeting. We've got a couple of slides there. This is the beginning fund balances, revenues, expenditures, the ending balances for the general fund, same as what we had presented, and then the total budget would be 161,201,638. So I don't have any other comments necessarily unless you had questions for us.
Any questions, Mr. Willard, on this budget?
Got some comments.
Comments, please, Mr. Moore.
I went through our budget book quite extensively after the last meeting. Dog-eared a lot of pages, circled a lot of things. You know, y'all are probably thinking, "Ed, you need to get a life," but...
Yeah.
I had a lot of questions on some of the individual items and then some of the assumptions I didn't necessarily agree with, but I met with the budget team for about an hour and a half last week. They answered all my questions, and I went through this for two reasons. One, did we in fact need to draw down the fund balance in the general fund? And if so, by how much? And if the answer to that was yes, then were we drawing down the fund balance for one-time capital items versus recurring operating expenses? And I discovered that we budgeted about 1,380,000 in one-time capital costs, and we're drawing down the fund balance by about 579,000. So we are not, we are not cutting into the fund balance, which is quite healthy, the previous slide, for recurring operating costs, just one-time expenses. I also wanted to take a look at the water and sewer funds, since we didn't really address that the other night, to look at a couple of things. Number one, did we have money in the budget to do the utility relocation for Harrison Road? And we do. And second, I wanted to get together with Angela. We have a number of revenue bond covenants that we have to meet each and every year, and I wanted to make sure that we were well above the minimums for those, and we are. So I'm a happy camper.
Perfect. Any other questions? Comments?
So, do any fund balances still going to be 1,000,000 dollars? Please.
Previous slide, please.
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's what we're going to project.
12, 378, 65.
The end of '18.
Exactly. Very good.
Mr. Willard, I noticed in the, well, with Angela's information in the paper today that we were down about a half million dollars on sales tax revenue for August, how do you think that's going to... The people in the city might want to know how you think that might affect your... Well, it's been a hot topic of discussion around City Hall, believe me, and it makes you go back and check your assumptions. I think two key things. I don't think it changes the trend going forward very much, because we, 2% is what we were actually down from current collections. The rest of the downtime was, or the downtrend was prior collections and audits, where they go back in the state controller, corrects prior audits and revenues and receipts. So that is real money that we have lost, but I don't think it really affects a trend going forward to that degree.
Really rolling down 2% in our sales tax revenue?
Yes.
Which not, the way you read it, it's not what they sounded.
Right. But, you know, it was a correction, so...
Absolutely.
I think we've budgeted conservatively enough going forward, and I, at this time, wouldn't recommend... And of course, the budget is just a, you know, a projection anyway, and so we monitor it every month, and we'll make the corrections necessary if it continues down.
It's a very fluid...
It is.
...exercise we're going through. And I want to say, Mr. Willard, and the whole budget finance team, y'all have done a fantastic job of preparing another great budget, and we're not through discussing it yet, but what we have so far is very encouraging, and what's really encouraging is the fact that all of these sexes is depressed right now. We know that. We can see it every time numbers come out. And the fact that we can continue to function as we are with no increases in any of our funds, in any of our taxations whatsoever to the citizens of Longview is a testament to how well our staff is looking after the city's money. And so I commend you all for that, because it's not the same for other communities surrounding our areas, even Tyler. You know, they're having to increase their taxes, their water, sewer, trash collection, everything. And so, and I get that. I mean, it is what it is, but I'm thankful that we're able to be where we are today with the revenues that we have and to budget correctly, and I appreciate the work and efforts y'all have put into this.
Thank you.
Very well done. We'll discuss on the proposed fee resolutions. Mr. Willard?
Yes, sir. You have in your budget books the fee resolutions that we have, are part of the budgeting process every year. Instead of going through those one by one, the way our general practice has been is to let you ask questions if you have any questions, any of them, and the directors that the departments that are affected are prepared tonight to answer any questions you might have on certain fee resolutions.
Any questions, council? I've looked at these fee resolutions, and I think that everything that has been done has been done with really good insight and good thought, with the citizens in mind, but also realizing that we as a city have to accomplish certain things. And so I think it's been done very appropriately and very methodically, and I appreciate the effort by every department that's gone through this, because there's quite a few of them.
Yes.
I appreciate the thought put into it, to try to do the best we can with the monies that we have for our citizens and our community, and I think that's what we've done, and I commend you once again for that exercise. We're now to consider a resolution on the proposed tax rate for 2017. Ms. Cohen.
Good evening. The state statute requires a vote on the proposed tax rate in the...
The state statute requires a vote on the proposed tax rate and the scheduling of two public hearings. The proposed tax rate is 12.23 cents for debt service, 38.76 cents for operations and maintenance, totaling 50.99 cents. This is not an increase to our current rate, and it is less than the effective and rollback tax rate. The two public hearings are set for August 24th and August 31st, and they will be here in the city hall chambers, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Ms. Cohen? Very well. Thank you, Ms. Cohen. We're now at the action item. Consider a resolution directing the city planning department to prepare a service plan for existing full municipal services to areas located within the ETJ within city limits north of East Loop 21, east of Tryon Road, and west of Hollybrook Drive, directing staff to take appropriate steps. Ms. Cohen. Ms...
Mayor.
Yes?
We need to vote on that last item.
Oh, I thought we were just considering the resolution tonight. We need to have the resolution.
We need to have a vote.
My bad. Back up.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Is there...okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Finley-Tucker. Didn't mean to wake you up over there, buddy. That was good. You didn't have to read that whole thing before you stopped me, did you? I'm not reading it again. We're going to consider another resolution. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. Staff has received a request for annexation of approximately 40 acres of land situated within our ETJ, our extraterritorial jurisdiction, located north of our city limits, east of Tryon Road, west of Hollybrook Drive. Earlier this year, city council authorized staff to enter into a 380 agreement with the developer to extend an eight-inch sanitary sewer line to this property. As part of this agreement, the developer agreed to request annexation and to construct a 30,000-square-foot rehabilitation hospital containing at least 30 patient beds. Staff is requesting city council enact a resolution directing city staff to prepare a service plan for this area and to allow staff to begin the annexation process.
Any questions, Ms. Choi, on this? Ms. Choi, we discussed this a few months ago, and this is going to be a very nice addition to our community and something that will bring jobs and income for our community as well, so I appreciate the staff looking into this and making this become a reality. So, we must have a resolution on this. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. As a community interest, Mr. Moore.
I would like to remind everybody, August 26th, Saturday at 10:00 a.m. in Development Services, another historical market workshop. Our last one in June had an excellent turnout, and hopefully we can have another good turnout in August. Second, I want to thank everybody that came to my town hall meeting Monday evening. There was some good input, interchange of ideas, and primarily, I want to thank our city staff. I gave them a list of the things that were talked about, and driving around my district today and an email from Rollin', they've already taken care of probably 90% of the items that were brought up, and so, staff, good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Naughty.
Good evening. Lily, Elle, and Mack, just wanted to say great job on the prayer and pledge. I mean, I know your granddad is still smiling about that.
But you like that name. Isn't there something catchy about one of those names out there?
Yeah, yeah. That's how I remember it.
Can't remember which one it is, but one of them got a really catchy name out there.
Also, too, Mr. Olson, thank you so much for what you do, and thank you for caring for others more than you care for yourself. That is awesome. And I am personally asking for prayer. We are getting ready to start another school year, so you guys, please keep us in your prayers. Thank you.
We will, Ms. Naughty. Thank you. And we need to excuse Ms. Williams.
Yes.
She's off on business this evening.
Moved to excuse Ms. Williams.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good. Thank you. Mrs. Shihara.
I've got two. One is I'd like to invite you to a town hall meeting for District 4 Tuesday, September 12th at 6:00 p.m. at my home church of Winterfield United Methodist. We're located at 2616 Tryon Road. We'll be glad to have you in our new anchor building. We'll discuss current issues going on with the city, any feedback you have, or complaints, or questions, or concerns that I could help you address. We'd be glad to do that there or at any time, so please join me. And then, one more. Yay! This one I just like to talk about at every meeting now, but I did want to thank again Terry Jackson and all of the city staff that helped make that happen. We had so many people complaining about seeing it every day, so I want to take a minute every day to thank all the people that worked really hard to actually get it torn down, and it happened fast when it happened, so it looks much better, and I really appreciate everybody that has worked so hard on that.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bertle?
Nothing.
I want to comment on your nice-looking tie you got on there, Mr. Bertle.
I know. You should have called me and told me.
They didn't get the memo. We're good. Mr. Willard?
Yes, sir. Thank you. You've met my grandchildren. I'd like to introduce my daughter, their mother, Taryn Boatman, from Chicago.
Taryn, it's nice to have you in the chambers tonight, and your children as well.
And also, my wife Cindy's here tonight.
And your mother, and your father. It's very nice to see you all. Okay, tonight, I'm going to talk for Ms. Williams tonight. She's having her District 3 town meeting in partnership with Longview IST Sean Bauer on Tuesday, August 27th at 6:00 p.m. at Brunt Rec Center. This will be a great time to come out and discuss things in District 3 with both Kasha and Sean. Sean is the LISD representative for that district, and a lot can be accomplished if people get out and take the time to come and express your concerns. If you don't express your concerns, they can never be handled, so please feel free to come out and do that. Green Street Recreation Day is 37th Annual Extravaganza. Happy Days Dinner and Variety Show, August 19th. Tickets are available at the Rec Center or call 903-237-1279. Summer's coming to an end, and the last day of public swim is Friday, August 11th, which is tomorrow, at the Longview Swim Center. So, get out there and swim your last day and enjoy the pool. August 12th, the dog have their turn. Dog Days of Summer at the Swim Center from 10:00 to 12:00. Must have tags and proof of rabies vaccination. Really? So, the dogs are going to swim? I like that. That's pretty cool. Can the people swim with them or just the dogs?
Owners can.
Owners can swim with them? Just curious. Okay.
Bring your dog.
No, I'm not coming, Laura, but thanks for the invitation. Okay, Veterans Plaza at Teague Park. Can we please help honor our American veterans? It's so easy to donate. Go to www.vetplaza.org. I'm going to say it again and again and again. Our veterans deserve this honor. They deserve this plaza. Send us your $5 to vetplaza.org. Please let this happen. Let's see if this thing taken care of. Y'all are going to get tired of hearing me say that you're going to give me the monies because I'm tired of saying it. Upcoming events. There are several community upcoming events throughout the Longview community. Longview's WOW, WOW's first birthday, Saturday, August 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I can't believe it's been a whole year. That's amazing. Okay, if you haven't been to WOW, you should go see what it's about. Hands-on discovery. It's a great thing for our community. Support this because it's good for our children. Run It Like It's Hot, Miracle Mud Run, Saturday, August 19th at Lear Park Sports Complex. If you have not done this, you should, because it's just a fun time to get in the mud, get dirty. It's fun. There's a lot of activity out there, but more than anything, this supports the Miracle League of East Texas, which is an organization that is building a handicap ball field for kids that can't play on a regular ball field, and once again, they need our support to be able to do this. So, let's get out there and run it like it's hot. I'm going to be there. I can't wait. I'm going to be in town this year. I was not supposed to be, but I am going to be, and so, I'll be coated in mud. Feel free to put the mud on me. It's going to be a lot of fun. More information on these events, please check out the calendar at visitlongviewtexas.com to learn more. Survey time. I'm going to talk about this for a second. We recently had our first Facebook Live Town Hall meeting, and it was a lot of fun. How many questions, would you guess, were submitted, including emailed to city hall for the hour-long meeting? Before I answer the question, I want to take this time publicly to once again thank city staff and all those involved with putting this together. This was an amazing event. Number one, because I was able to do this without any glitches, and I'm so technically challenged that it scared me to death that I would be there and like my mouth would